Greetings, good people. It's your girl T and my partners in crime on another edition of Leaders and Learners, the South Bay Edition. These last few pods have been incredible for us because we get to talk to our candidates for city council and mayor of Redondo Beach. And for everyone that gets to watch, you get some insight that you might not be able to get in other places. So it brings us a lot of pride to be able to bring these conversations to you. Make sure you know that you can ask questions live and they will answer them hopefully. And you can always continue to ask us follow up and we will do our best to bring you those answers. So again, thank you guys for being here for another addition. And Paul, let them know who we have today.
Today, we have a 40 year resident of Redondo Beach. He's for the more than, more than half of that. He's had a small business in the Riviera Village and he's our current candidate for District One. Let's welcome Brad Waller.
Hey Brad.
Hey Brad.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, every well, even morning, everybody.
Nice to see you. Thanks for being here. So Brad, let's kick it off as I like to do with every candidate. My first question is, why are you running?
I'm running because I can make a difference. I started my public service, as you want to call it, when my daughter went into first grade. I showed up to a PTA meeting because it's like, okay, I want to know what's going on and what I can do. And I got on their board, literally in that first meeting. My career took me to, you know, the regional, you know, PTA, we've got the council, we've got the district, we've got the state and the national. I served on board of directors at every level up through the state PTA multiple times. I've been on a national PTA committee and I do that because I've got opinions and you can't be the kind of person that says, hey, you should do it this way unless you're willing to step up and do it. In the middle of my PTA career, the opportunity for school board opened up. It was an open race with three empty seats. And I thought, well, hey, I've done as much as I can here at PTA locally. School board is how I can now make a difference and be a leader and make this school system better. So now we've got city council and I believe that I can make our city better. And I'm here to step up and be that person ready to lead.
Fabulous. Um, let's go back to the school board. What do you believe was your greatest impact on, when you were on school board, on the district, on the policies and on the, on the body itself? And then let's translate that into the future if you're elected on council.
Um, when I first got elected to the school board, we had just passed the measure Q bond, and that was for technology and solar. And my background as a engineer, I think really made a big difference. I was the only person there that when we got solar contractors coming in and giving us information that could look at some of those proposals and understand and ask the real questions based on what they were talking about. And I also got to learn a lot there about operating a bond, citizen oversight committees, lease lease backs, weird terms that, you know, people don't necessarily know about refinancing bonds. Um, I guess one of the other things that I did, it wasn't really impactful for the bond, but I think it was a community. Um, it was my idea to rename Redondo Shores after Pat Dreisler. Um, and I wanted to make sure that I did that while she was still alive so that it could be appreciated. And it wasn't just, okay, now that, you know, somebody's been passed for four years, we're allowed to do it. You know, our policies allowed us to name, name the school. So I made it a priority and I pushed it through and we got to name a school that Pat had an impact on and really meant something to her. She got to be there for that. And that's something I was really proud of. Um, you asked more, I don't remember what else.
Forgive me. The, uh, and now, so translating that to the future, say you're elected to council, what impact will you have on the body itself? And what would you bring to, to Redondo? What, what are the things you'd like to see happen?
All right. Um, first thing I've said, I would say is take that bond experience and put it right on. Um, there's nobody else that will be on that body, no matter what. There's nobody up for election and nobody serving that has ever been there from day one of a bond. I've dealt with both the measure C and the measure Q bonds, um, in the middle of C and the very beginning of Q. So I bring that. Um, I also want to make sure that we can support our local businesses and attract new good businesses to improve our city's revenue. It's critical for funding our public services, ensuring fair wages for our labor partners, our police, our fire, our employees. We ought to be able to retain those. So right now, Redondo isn't necessarily a business's first thought. Uh, you talked to a lot of businesses and they say, oh, well, no, I'm going to open in Torrance or I'm going to open in El Segundo because Redondo is just too much work. Um, so what I want to do is I want to change that attitude. Um, and the city council gives direction. So if we give that direction to staff and say, what can we do to make this better? Let's create a custom AI that allows people to come to the city website and ask it questions like they're going up to the front desk of a concierge at a hotel. And this custom AI would be both for business and residents. Um, I've talked to people that had more trouble putting up an ADU than some of the bigger developers have had putting up entire projects because the city, they don't know what they're doing. They've never done it before. And so they have to learn it all. So if you had an AI that you said, I'm going to build an ADU in my yard, what do I need to know? And it would say, well, you have to check your zoning, you have to do this, you have to learn, you know, here's some codes you want to know. Here are the people you want to talk to. This is the person at the city that can tell you what to do. Give them a checklist, the same thing for businesses. Because if we can improve our revenue base here, get, and get our sales tax equivalent to the surrounding cities that we've fallen behind, at least keep up with inflation, then that'll really make a big difference.
Brad, I think one of the first times I had an in-depth conversation with you was at a Chamber of Commerce event. And it is important to me that Chamber of Commerce and the city work well together. I was informed that that was not the case here in Redondo Beach, which is shameful. And I think that has been a part of why people have not seen this as business friendly. So my question to you is, how did we get there to the point where people don't feel like they want to open businesses in Redondo? And how can we build trust again with future business owners and camaraderie with our chambers of commerce?
Yeah, the chamber basically is pro-business and sometimes that means change and development. And the powers that be that were in the city council didn't agree. And so basically, the chamber became a symbol of what they were against. And there, there was a chamber PAC, there was a chamber visitors bureau, and the city council basically looked at that and said, okay, we're going to, you know, make life hard for everybody. They took away the money that was going to the visitors bureau. Um, the PAC ended up being dissolved as far as I know. And at that point, the chamber became sort of relegated to the background. What we need to do is, like you said, chambers work hand in hand. You look at Torrance, you can look at El Segundo, those are really strong chambers for their community. Um, I, you know, I've talked to Donna from the Torrance Chamber a number of times, trying to find out what it is that they're doing different. So I can get some good ideas for when we start up in Redondo Beach, when I'm on the council. You know, if we have a council majority that reaches out to the chamber and says, what can we do together? How do we make things better? I think that, that will go a long way towards helping what we're, what we're doing. Uh, there's a second part to your question, or maybe a third part that I didn't get to.
I guess it was, it was more or less, how do you change that? But I want to double back on something you already said, which is this problem started with people that were up in city council before, but aren't some of these same people still a part of city council? And how can we remedy the city and chamber working together if we still have some of those same mindsets in leadership?
Um, I think if the majority of leadership changes, then that helps. So, um, the, you know, if I'm, I'm on District One, um, I haven't actually talked to Chad Castle that much about that, but Chad's a business person. He's a number person. I think Chad would be a lot more reasonable towards that. Um, Zane seems to be very reasonable towards the businesses. Scott seems to be very reasonable towards the businesses. Um, and Paige seems to, you know, she showed, Paige shows up at NRBBA events and Paige shows up at chamber events. So I think that we will have people that are at least neutral or positive on the city council moving forward after my election. So I think that will go a long way.
Miriam?
You know, um, thanks, Brad. I do agree that, um, we do need to work on our city's financial fitness. Um, and that, so I'm going to ask you the same question I asked, uh, somebody who's running. We had Darren King recently for District, um, One as well. So your opponent. So I want to ask you the same question I asked him. Um, you mentioned you wanted to work, your, a priority could be for you to attract businesses, right? Can you tell me a little bit about what your thoughts are around how we can do that? What we might need to do? Um, and in terms of the mall, what are your thoughts around that? I know you are running for District One and the mall is in District Four, but as a council person, you work together or are supposed to work together as collaborators to improve our city overall. So what are your thoughts around that? Do you have any?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll start off on the big picture. Uh, we are a city. And yes, I represent District One, which means I need to be accountable to the District One residents. But the city pays the bills and if the city doesn't have the money to pay the bills, then it becomes a citywide issue. So, um, the Aviation Artesia Corridor and the mall are two amazing areas that we could get to grow our revenue base substantially. So in fact, all the areas where we can have lots of growth are outside of District One. District One is already doing decent, is doing pretty well, probably the best out of any district. We've got the Riviera Village, which is thriving. We've got PCH, which has some issues. But, you know, in general, District One is doing really well from a business side. So we really do need to look at districts two, three, four, and five and, and build those up and see where we can do that. Um, the, the Galleria property, the South Bay Social District, they got delayed by city slowness. City functions just took so long between processes and appeals and everything else that they missed their window for financing. So if interest rates do drop, they're ready to start. Um, I would be happy to see them go to the larger number of housing units. I believe it's 600 or 650 housing units, because some of those housing units will go to people that work at the LA Space Force Base. Some of those units will go to people that work in our schools and even in our police and fire. I talked to the police department and one of their concerns is that the new hires, the kids that are coming in, um, yes, they get paid reasonably well, but they don't get paid enough to live close and they're commuting in from an hour away. And it becomes a barrier and somebody's going to say, well, I could stay here or I could get a job closer to home that probably is going to pay more anyhow. So if we can get them in the community, we're way better off retaining an employee than keeping on hiring these new people and spending all that money to get them trained up to where we want them to be. So we don't want them perfect and then have them disappear. Um, yeah. So that, you know, there's a bunch we can do. I talked a little bit of already about the, um, you know, business concierge side of this, the AI to bring the businesses in.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. That's so, that's such an innovative way to see it because I do agree that, you know, it would be great to have just another resource or a resource in general. Because as somebody who has struggled with that myself, I, I love that idea because I have had those same struggles with trying to, um, go to the city planning and trying to get some things done around here. So, um, I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate this vision for the mall. Um, you know, that is definitely something that's a huge priority for, and it should be for all of us here in the city. Because, you know, the Riviera Village, um, you're right. I used to live very close to the, 10 years ago, when I first, um, my husband and I first got married, we lived in District One, uh, for a very short period of time. And the Riviera Village was, was okay, but it was nothing like it is today. So I do have hope because I can see in 10 years, look at how beautiful, it's become more beautiful, many more restaurants, many more things to do. And I do think you're right that we can apply that to the rest of the city.
You know, Brad, I was, we should tell everyone that Brad, Tanya and myself, we were all on the GPAC. We spent eight years on, working on the GPAC and that decided the new general plan. So the new general plan will come across the dais of the city council. And if you're elected, Brad, were there any aspects of that general plan, um, that you want to revisit?
Um, probably. I, I was a bit more of a fan of the mixed use than I think what ended up in the plan. I think there's some corridors that would benefit from that.
Yeah, PCH South would very much benefit from a more relaxed zoning. And they've done something like this in the, in the village where they relax the parking requirement for, for, um, but it's street level retail.
Yeah.
Um, that, that changed things quite a bit, but it's actually rather forward thinking.
Yeah, the park, parking, that, that's a whole other thing. Um, it's, it's always an issue in the, in the village, but parking is one of the things that drives the, um, the Artesia Corridor from not being able to grow is the parking requirements. So relaxing the parking requirements, making it easier, um, to look at the parking that's available everywhere else, I think would make a big difference, uh, there. So parking is another one.
Brad, let me, before this gets too far out, that's something that city council could have done before. That is something that could have been done and it wasn't. What are your thoughts on that? Because you have been in leadership in the city, though it wasn't city council. I, I think you have a good, um, understanding of where we are and how we got here. Why do you think these things haven't been done, even though they are things that could have improved our city before? What is the hindrance? And how can you be a part of, um, breaking that down?
Yeah, well, honestly, I think a big part of it is District One and Two have kept the power, um, and done things possibly at the detriment of districts three, four, and five. Um, so there's been a lot of decisions that get made because people in the south vote more, um, maybe they're louder. I don't know exactly what it is, but our stronger leadership have been people from districts one and two. So I think it's been easy for them to say, well, I'm paying attention to the issues that I really care about and they're right here. And, oh, well, Artesia Boulevard is dying and, you know, we'll put, we'll put some paint on stuff and we'll, we'll do a, uh, a grant program to help people put by surroundings and paint on their buildings. But they really haven't paid any attention to, to much in the north. And so again, as a District One person, I would pay attention to the north because that's, that's how we, we make the city greater is by, by doing things outside of my district as well as inside. Sure, you know, inside my district, there's going to be stop signs and speeders and bike lanes and things like that, that I want to make sure get done. But we, we need to start having the vision that we are one city. And how do we make this city better? And that's going to be paying attention to the ignored parts of, parts of the city. You know, some of the roads in the north are crap. Um, there's a lot of areas in the north that don't have any trees that should have trees. So, you know, there's a lot of things that we can do. Um, where I look around where I am, it's like, this is beautiful. Why isn't the rest of the city at least close to this?
Speaking of vision, really quick, um, I love your vision, by the way. Part of the reason I love your vision is because you are a parent. And I would be, uh, remiss if I didn't bring up the fact that I have continuously, well, I went to Bill Brand and I've talked often about having more going on in this community for our young people. Again, some of these leaders in the city feel like, well, we have the beach, so that's enough. They can just go do that. And as a LA County Commissioner, I do know that our numbers for overdoses and drug use has gone up. That also includes, even though people don't want to have this conversation, the South Bay. So what is your vision for opportunities of unity and connection and recreation for our young people in Redondo Beach?
Um, the, the first is, is looking at the Parks and Rec and seeing what kind of programs we have available that are attractive to the youth. Um, it's hard to find stuff that's attractive to the teens, but, you know, start them young. Um, the sports programs that we have are really good. I really love, you know, between, uh, Redondo Little League and Redondo Sunset and AO ISO, um, and, you know, the, you know, we've got, you know, dance and theater and all these other programs to get the youth involved, which is great. Um, but I think we still need to maintain our partnerships and our work with Beach Cities Health District. What they've done with Al Cove is really amazing. What they did for the youth obesity in Redondo Beach, you know, they started that about the time that, um, I was in PTA, um, where I remember giving food demonstrations and picking food out of the garden where the kids, it's like, oh, look, this is actually good. I grew it. I tasted it and the other parents going, it's like, they're eating vegetables? How did that happen? Um, so Beach Cities, you know, part of, you know, what they're, they're doing is mental health and drug issues. So that's where we want to, you know, leverage them as much as we can, uh, keep them around, um, so that they can provide some of these services to our youth that'll benefit everybody.
Brad, is there one district specific thing that you want to happen that may be a little, not necessarily wonky, but maybe, yeah, this is just something that I've got to fix in this district. I mean, uh, Councilman or Councilwoman Kaler Dredge, she had crossing guards and Mayor Brand had a crosswalk on Torrance Boulevard and, and Broadway. Um, is there just something that you just like, we got to fix this?
Um, the bicycle routes are in plan. So definitely, you know, make sure that the bicycle routes get finished along Palos Verdes Boulevard and Prospect. Um, Prospect is a big route for a lot of kids on their bicycles as well. Um, and so I think there's things that we can do on Prospect. I've seen proposals about dedicated bicycle lanes that eliminate parking. But I would think I would rather see a bicycle lane that eliminates one of the traffic lanes, especially in the south part of Prospect, you know, over by Toledo and south of Alta Vista where Prospect is not nearly as busy. And there's a lot of speeding going on. Um, accidents at Palos Verdes Boulevard and, and Prospect have, have been increasing. So I would really like to see some innovative things that we can do. Um, you know, traffic calming is the word that they use, but, you know, it's between the bicycle lanes and the narrowing of the street and the beautification of that. I think there's things that we can do there. Um, and the other one, um, here in Riviera Village, I would really like to get it to the point where we can close off Catalina, um, on certain summer weekends and see how that works. And if it works out well, see if we can expand that and maybe it becomes an all summer weekend thing and all holidays. Catalina gets closed off and we can have shopping and people and, and, and just bring me a community. Um, if that then works, then at either end of Catalina at Avenue I and then at Vista Del Mar, um, you could put in a, a structure in the middle of the road, which of course means that there's now going to be a roundabout, which is Jeff Ginsberg's favorite thing. Um, in certain places, I do, do like roundabouts and I think they could actually work in those two places because then it becomes a big thing. And in the central island, you could put a band shell on one side and maybe a stage or picnic areas on the other side. So when the streets are closed, you have focal points and places for community. Um, but that'll take money that we don't have at this point.
Great ideas, though. I love it.
We have a question. Uh, says for the last eight years, District One has lacked representation on city council. Will you represent all of District One or just special interests?
Um, I pledge to represent the entire district as well as the entire city. Um, like I said, we, we need to be able to make the city better without paying attention to only one group of people. Um, but I will listen to everybody. Um, I've got a, a meeting set up on Saturday with somebody who, um, has been a big supporter of Nils in the past. I'm going to talk to everybody. I'm going to hear things because it turns out that there may be one issue that we never agree on, but there's 10 that we do agree on. So let's work for those 10 and make sure that we can, we can do things there and unify people through those issues. And yes, there's going to be issues that people aren't going to be happy about. When I was on, when I was on the school board, I had a very vocal group of people that were very upset that we closed the schools, even though we didn't have a choice and the county made us do it. When we reopened the schools and we were one of the first districts in the Southern California area to reopen, we had another group of people that were really upset with us because we opened the schools and we shouldn't have done that. So I'm used to getting the vitriol and hearing how bad I am. Um, I can deal with.
Appreciate that. Uh, okay. So I'm just gonna deal with this little elephant in the room. There's been some really bad things said about you by the other side, whoever the other side is, which is really weird for me because I have only experienced your ability to lean in, participate, contribute, help. You've been there for NRBBA events and, um, you've participated in chamber things and any, damn near any community event, you have been there. So where does that come from? Where does the vitriol come from? Even though you have been such an incredibly contributive part of this community? And how do we combat that in a community that should be a lot more unified? What is that?
Um, I'll start with the combating part. Um, I think that the way you do it is by setting the example. And, um, I don't know, 10, 12 years ago, I spoke at city council. I literally spoke at city council and told them that the anonymous attacks, the anonymous social media pages that are out there are not helping. They're in fact hurting and they're something that should be stopped. And as leaders, that they needed to be out there and denouncing it. So if there was an anonymous Facebook page out there that was making up lies about my opponent, I would denounce that. And they needed to do that too. Um, and the response from the dais was, well, I don't know who those people are. And it's like, no, denouncing it doesn't mean you know who they are. Just, we need to denounce it, set the example, don't stand for it, be outspoken. Um, why it's happening is because we have sides and people like to hide behind anonymous pages. And so because, you know, I am not on their side, therefore they've got to come up with something to say about me. And, you know, either it's, uh, you know, a distortion or just totally made up. Um, I, I've been told by people that have talked to, you know, they've, they've talked around this, well, so and so says that you're just a Centracal person. It's like, I was.
What even is that?
Well, it's like, there, there were people that were, um, lobbying for the Centracal project. Um, I went to the meetings, I was on the school board and we decided we're going to stay neutral. We're not going to take positions. So I never publicly came out with any position. I never privately lobbied anybody about it. I, I voted the way I voted, but, and I talked to friends, but I was never a person out there promoting any of that stuff.
Well, since we're on Centracal, what is your thoughts on the pier? Because we've lost businesses. We don't shop there. We don't patronize that place. It is a hot mess. So what are your thoughts about it?
Um, I think we do need some sort of a public, private partnership because I'm not going to go to the city and say, we need $200 billion bond so we can rebuild a parking facility. Um, so we need some sort of a, a partnership with somebody who's willing to take the risk, which is pretty much nobody at this point. Cause I've, I've spoken to people, um, that have said, oh yeah, I avoid Redondo Beach. I don't, I'm not going to do any real estate, anything in Redondo Beach. So we need to be able to get that attitude changed so we can. So we need to be able to get that attitude change so we can bring somebody in who's willing to 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 take the heat and work with us. Because we're going to need to be able to rebuild the parking structure, uh, deal with sea level rise. You know, everything that's going on there, um, you know, and it's a district two issue, but it's a citywide issue. Just because the pier area is in district two, that that's that's the whole city.
Correct.
Brad, you mentioned bonds. Can you share with us your position on the the previous bonds that we just voted on in the last election?
Sure.
And why you supported or didn't support that?
Uh, I actually, I supported all three bonds. At the $2,400,000 valuation for the measure VC. It was a small thing to do. Um, and it would move them forward. I've been a supporter of them for what they've done for the schools and our students and the and the elderly in our community. So I thought that was a a very small price to pay. On the schools in the city. I think the city was long overdue for that bond. I think they should have done that bond. Probably, you know, eight years ago is when they should have gone out for that bond. And it, you know, they could have interest rates were better. Um, you could have gotten more for their more bang for the buck. But everything that it's going to work to fix um, has been a problem. It's been a problem for 20 years. Uh, so FP was definitely needed and the schools. Real estate values go up in Redondo Beach because people want to live here. They want to live here because the schools are great and because we're a safe community. So having the police and fire keeping us safe and having the schools a destination. Where, yes, there is declining enrollment in Redondo Beach, but it's not declining as much as the averages out there. We're actually far stronger than many of the communities around us.
The uh, do you think that the, had we acted or if, do you think that the fire bond was inevitable even back then? Or was there a way that we could have allocated more funds toward ma- maintenance? Or maybe it's just every 25 years, you're going to have to do this?
I think because it's such a big number that a bond will be needed. But yes, if if we had um, a strong Galleria and a strong harbor and pier going and. Yes, even a strong thing. This will be your next question now. At where the AES power plant is, if our city revenues were, you know, $5 million, $7 million a year more. Some, a lot of that money would end up going to salaries and going to things anyhow. So it's not like it could all go into a fire reserve and a police reserve for buildings. But maybe the bond wouldn't have to be so big. And maybe the maintenance actually would have kept things up and we can extend the life. So instead of 25 years, maybe it's 50 years next time.
Yeah, you know, I just got to say, I live just east of the power plant. I can look at it right now out this window. It's right there between me and the ocean. I don't think anything's going to happen there for at least 10 years. It it even the tiniest step is not going to happen for 10 years. That is just a stalemate that is not going to be won by the city right now. We don't really have a card to play other than cooperation and I don't see that happening for a while. So I'm not really. Everybody out there who thinks they're really spooked, oh, they're going to make something there. It's nothing's going to happen. It's not going to be a park. It's not going to be a. It's not going to be a power plant. It's not going to be anything. It's just going to be this moth ball sitting there. So we shouldn't be concerned too much about that. Something that is coming online is the Legato project right there in District One. And I supported that. I thought it was a wonderful thing um, until it got tweaked a little too much because of citizen action. Uh, and they did. They worked with this community quite a bit to bring it about and that. The hotel coming back, the PBN, that's going to bring, if if you've noticed in our budgets, the TOT is never really couldn't. TOT is the transient occupancy tax. That's never really covered since pre pandemic. So we get that hotel back online. We'll get a number of of dollars back from that and that'll pay off. And the hotel was always there. It's not like it's a new thing. Um, the residence component of that is a new thing. But there's one specific thing about that project is there's a couple of small businesses that are going in there. And there's one supply studio. They have to jump through hoop after hoop to get into that new project. Whereas we have smoke shops that are basically high rise. Uh, they can open wherever they want. It's it it, have you hit anything those those headwinds or seen it in the village or in Diguon? Where small businesses are just saying, why is this so hard?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, the the Legato project, um, some of the early versions of the project. Were actually cosmetically more pleasing. Ha- having fewer units that were smaller that gave them the bonuses and had some more affordable housing. Also had the benefit of it was a nicer looking plan. Um, it wasn't right up to the corner building and it had some more, some nice architectural features that went away. After all that tweaking, as you said, that went back and forth. And 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 about the the businesses opening, the city should really have that mindset that. This is money for the city. So when somebody comes in, it it's like, I want to shepherd you through, you know, you are my person. I'm going to make sure that I help you get through because the sooner that you're in here and the more successful you are, the more money it is for our district or for our um. For our city. So we really need to have that that change of attitude. But the, you know, also, you know, the the same attitude in the planning side for for the residents. It's too many residents have the same thing of just like. The planning department is used to dealing with developers and builders. And when a resident comes in and says, I want to do this. Think it's like, oh, cool. You're a resident. Let me do this for you. Let me help you. And so we need to do the same things there.
Quick question. Uh, what are your views on Black History Month and gay pride inclusion?
I'm happy uh, that we have been celebrating those. I've got no idea about the country. But um, here in Redondo Beach, um, this last Black History Month, I think that they did they skip the celebration or something? There was, I don't know what happened to that one, but I've been to many of the past ones. I was at the flag raising for for Pride Month this last year. I I'm supportive and inclusive of people. To me, whether you are, you know, a a, you know. Your political views, your social views, what you do, it's like. I support. I support you to do that. And we have people, though, that have been marginalized. And so if somebody's in one of those communities that's been marginalized, I don't see a problem with recognizing them, recognizing their contributions to our country. So um, I'm happy to have have those. Um, I know on the school board, we would use, you know, we would recognize everything from, you know, Black History Month to, um, you know. They it's uh, school administrators or something like that. But, you know, recognition isn't negative. Recognition is a positive because why not recognize everybody for what they're doing at some point? But definitely the marginalized groups, groups that have been redlined out. I know my. Yeah, you know, if this was 70 years ago when my house was built, uh, my wife and I couldn't have moved into our house because my wife is Asian. And the CCNRs didn't allow Asians or blacks or anything like that. So this is a real thing. It's not like people are making up the fact that, oh, what do you mean? You know, this, we're a modern society. It's like, you can still see paperwork and documents for when, you know. We have red light, redlining going on, stuff like that.
Well, point of privilege, I do want to thank you for being at the first Redondo Beach uh, Black History Month celebration, MLK celebration. Uh, when we got the bench put in front of uh, City Hall. So that was a great moment. And even though it was celebrating one culture, it brought the whole city together. So with that being said, uh, I want to thank you for being there and you've always been there. So, you know, thanks for that. Um, what were you saying? I'm sorry.
You know, to be honest, I forgot. Let's move on. There's another question from the audience. I was literally, I was like, ah, no, I don't remember.
I have a question. You mentioned Legato project. I've heard some residents around the project are very concerned about the impact of nearby streets. Such as Avenue G as a cut through to PCH. What are your comments?
Um, I've heard those same things. I've knocked on doors in that neighborhood. And, you know, the Legato project is probably number one or number two thing I hear about. I remember some of the studies on the number of car trips planned when when it spread out over the day. I've got a feeling it's going to be a smaller impact than what people are worried about. However, if say there's a cut through on Avenue G that becomes too busy, then I would look at doing what we did on. Paul, you'll have to help me. Along 190th, is it Maria?
Maria or Lena, one of those streets.
It's on Paulina. Um, no, it's on Maria. And it eliminated that cut through to the thing that unfortunately, I live on Lucia. Right next door, we have, you know, the two streets get the extra traffic now. All they did was shift the problem onto their neighbors. And I thought it was a horrible, horrible solution. I'm sorry to be a.
No, no.
That kind of guy. But um, yeah, I just, I thought it was terrible. What they could have done is what we did on Lucia is put in some uh, speed humps. That slowed down traffic and it made people not use the street as as a cut through. And it actually improved our neighborhood as opposed to just saying, you know, we're going to cut off the end of Lucia and you guys can drive around up into Paulina and just everybody goes that way. It was just a a really bad solution. Unfortunately, it's made out of concrete. We're probably not going to get rid of it.
Good feedback to have.
Absolutely. Well, Brad, look, we want to thank you for taking the time and spending it with us, helping the viewers understand who you are. Kind of your views, your leadership in the city, your vision for growth and improvement and hopefully a little more unity. Yeah. Let them know how they can continue to follow you, support you and, you know, your last words before the election because I got my ballot. So.
I did too.
Yeah. So your thoughts?
All right, so um, I would appreciate not just your support, but your outreach. Talk to your friends. If you're supporting me, make sure you talk to everybody you know that's also in District One and let them know. Brad is a great candidate that you need to vote for Brad. My information is on my website, elect.bradwaller.com. My email is brad@bradwaller.com. I will put out, you know, things on social media as well. Reach out to me. I want to listen to and hear from everybody. So even if you were not a supporter, after the election, I am still happy to hear from you. So I want to be inclusive. I want to grow the city. I want to make us successful. I want to make people happy to serve again on on our on our city council where it becomes maybe a long, maybe hard work, but at least. We like each other.
All right.
That'd be a nice change.
Miriam, Miriam, Paul, anything before we get out of here?
Well, we let Brad go and we'll, we'll, I'm sorry, go ahead, Miriam.
I was gonna say, I just want to thank uh, Brad for his time today and and coming on and and giving your, you know, honest uh, answers. And good luck. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Brad. We really do appreciate it and good luck to you. Um, we should let him go. We'll touch on the upcoming ranked choice voting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad. Bye. All right, let's get into it.
All right, so President should have gotten this in the mail about the election. And it's ranked choice voting. So you're only going to send in one ballot one time. What ranked choice voting seems to be is kind of like a on paper caucus. So you're going to pick uh, for your first choice, uh, in any office, if there's more than two candidates. It's going to, you have to pick a first choice, a second choice and up to a fifth choice when it comes to mayor. We're still trying to figure out exactly all the implications of how you vote and how it's actually tabulated. But it seems like that in the case for mayor, the top two vote getters don't get enough votes to get to 50% plus one. And so the person that gets the least amount of votes is eliminated. Those votes get added to the top, you know, those those votes get added to the who's remaining and it goes on. So it seems like. I I don't, I'm not super excited about this. I I kind of regret, you know, supporting ranked choice voting, but it is the system that we have. Because it just seems kind of, well, we we hope to have Eleanor Muns honor our city clerk on. And she can explain it and all the implications because we're not quite sure about every last little detail. Right now, it just seems like you got to rank everybody. It's in your interest to to vote for everybody. There are some implications of leaving it blank, uh, but I, we don't know yet. We have to talk to Eleanor. But it it's coming up. It's all mail in election. It's super easy to vote, fill in the dots, mail it in, get involved, make sure you, you know. Take some interest in your community. So everybody's got to fill these ballots out and and be be a good citizen. It's it's your civic duty.
Hey, don't complain about the results, especially if you don't participate. You have to participate. You have to be a part of the solutions. We're all about solutions here. So make sure you do your part so that we can all celebrate a better, more thriving Redondo. Yep. Anything before we get out of here, Miriam?
Nope, just vote, please. Uh, open up your mailbox. Because it'll be in there. Oh, also, I do want to say you can mail your ballot back in, but there are also um, ballot drop boxes. So in North Redondo, there's one at the library. South Redondo area, there's one at the uh, you know, the, what is it? The Civic Center where the city council meetings happen. So you can find a list of those um, ballot drop off areas.
Yeah, I'm a skeptic. I have to go drop mine off.
Me too. I have to drop mine off. Ever since I I mailed my ballot in once and I guess it never went through. So I'm now, I always put it in the ballot box.
Yeah, those go direct to the city clerk's office. They do not go through the postal service.
Yeah.
So do your part, guys, and we will see you uh, for another con- candidate next week.
Take care.
Hey, thanks for showing up to the podcast where we all know that the best leaders are lifetime learners. When you get a sec, take a moment. Leave a comment. What'd you think about today's episode? And share it with someone that you know could use the gems that were dropped today. Follow and subscribe. You don't want to miss who's coming up next. You never know who could show up here and what they could say. For your professional needs, marketing, PR, communications or leadership, make sure you follow us on all social media platforms at Sand and Shores. Or hit us up at sandandshores.com. Again, thanks so much for showing up. We appreciate you and we'll see you soon.